Okay, if not mine is here. If it happens to go down.
You're good. Welcome everyone to our first meeting of June 10th, ninth or 2025. Can we call this a meeting to order? Madam Clerk?
Be it resolved that this regular meeting now open at 6:01 PM moved by Deputy Mayor Dencham, second by Council McDonald.
Thank you. Any or all in favor? Motion's carried. Is there any opening remarks from council? Seeing none, moving on to the adoption of the agenda.
So through the chair, we did have an addition. We amended the agenda to add a presentation in. So I have an amended resolution for that. Be it resolved that the agenda be approved as amended to add a presentation under section 5.1, public meeting, trip line, public meeting, June 10th to SDG, moved by Council McDonald, second by Council Vigeli.
Thank you. Any question, discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Motion's carried. Is there any disclosure of community interests? Seeing none, moving on to our public meeting. So is there an opportunity for maybe to reverse those and have maybe the Ruben to make his presentation? Because I mean, they're in line with what's following after. Does that make sense, Megan? Or do we do the president?
Usually I will go over the subdivision process and everything like that. And then the developer or the development team will follow after that.
Perfect. Okay. So moving. No, so just thank you. So item 5.1 in regards to plan a subdivision SDNG file number 01-NS-S-2025 and a zoning amendment Z-2025-05 for the Heritage Trail subdivision. So we have, I'll get a mover and seconder and then I'll pass it on to.
So through the chair, we actually don't have any resolution. It's just strictly a public meeting.
So we don't need to get a mover to just accept the report?
Correct. No, there's actually no report for nothing for tonight. Just a, just.
Just a public meeting. Perfect. And there will be opportunities also for members of the public. I believe Megan will go over the details. So I guess take it away and Megan.
Thank you. Okay, there we go. Thank you. All right. So tonight's meeting is two parts. We're going to have the public meeting for the zoning by law amendment application that was received for a subdivision application. Sorry, in conjunction with the subdivision application for a property in Finch. So the meeting is being held under section 34 of the Planning Act regarding the zoning by law amendment application. So any requests to be notified of the decision for the zoning by law amendment can be made to planning at norstormont.ca. In 2022, the province removed the requirement to host and have public meetings in regards to plans of subdivision. County council came together in 2022 and passed a resolution that we would still have these meetings for transparency, to make sure that the community is receiving all the information and just to make sure that everyone's aware, rather than just having the applications, go through the process and rendering a decision without anyone knowing in any information about it. So that's why we're here today. The request to be notified of the decision of the approval authority in relation to the decision regarding the plan of subdivision can be made to planning at sdgcounties.ca. Oh, I don't think it's working still. Todd, can you go? Sorry. Can you go to the next one? So I'm going to give a overview of kind of the planning process in regards to the subdivision. And then the development team is here and they're going to kind of follow up after me. So the public meeting outlined, this meeting is an open forum to give information, receive information for the public council as well as the development team to be able to voice kind of their concepts. An overview of the rezoning and subdivision process will be provided by staff, by myself. Like I said, as well as Ruben is here from Tripine, he's going to give kind of a brief overview of the development proposal. Following the presentation, there will be an opportunity for comments and questions from the public and council. And we'll be able to hopefully answer them as best as possible from a playing perspective as well as from the development team. The biggest takeaway for tonight is there's no decisions are made tonight. So this is strictly for information purposes only. We are kind of still in the preliminary stage for the subdivision. So this is just for information to receive information. And then we still have kind of a couple, at least a month before a decision would even be rendered for the subdivision. Thank you. Notice of the public meetings. So we are required to provide notice to all landowners within 120 meters of the subject property. So that was delivered by mail. The notice was also posted on a sign located at the front of the property and on the township website. Notice of the subdivision is also sent to prescribed list of agencies under the planning act. So the conservation authority, the township, Bell Hydro, any telecommunications, propane providers, anything like that, county roads, anyone there where there's infrastructure, the township as well. So they've all received notice and have had the opportunity to comment on this application. Appeal rights for the zoning by law amendment. So if a person or public body would otherwise have an ability to appeal the decision of the council of the corporation of the township of North Stormont to the Ontario Land Tribunal, but the person or public body does not make oral submissions at a public meeting or make written submissions to the township of North Stormont before the bylaws passed, the person or public body is not entitled to make an appeal on the decision. If a person or public body does not make oral submissions at a public meeting or make written submissions to the township of North Stormont before the bylaws passed, the person or public body may not be added as a party to the hearing of an appeal before the Ontario Land Tribunal, unless, in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so. Shortly after the removal of the requirement to host a public meeting, the province also removed the appeal rights for third parties. So members of the public cannot appeal, cannot appeal the decision of the approval authority when granting or refusing the subdivision. The applicant, the local municipality, the minister and certain agencies like the CIA or circulated agencies that provide a comment do have the ability to appeal the decision. So the subdivision process over continued to this. The county has the approval authority to refuse or the, sorry, to refuse or approve the proposed plan of subdivision. The following tonight's public meeting, the United Counties will review all submissions made by public agencies and staff before making any sort of decision. If approved, conditions are drafted to address development requirements as well as items raised through public and agency consultation. So these typically include the requirement to enter into a subdivision up agreement, require preliminary and more detailed design plans through that process. This is the site location of the subject property. So it's within the settlement area of Finch and it's highlighted in green. The next slide, Todd. It is considered or designated, I'm sorry, urban settlement area under the SDG County official plan. And it also has a residential district. So you can kind of see the border around it. That's the urban settlement area of Finch. The pink is the residential district. And along the main street, it's kind of hard to see here, but it's, it's an orange color and that's kind of the commercial area. There's a broad spectrum of different uses that are permitted within the urban settlement area. Residential, commercial, industrials are some of them. This proposal is strictly aimed at residential development. There's no commercial or industrial aspects to it. So it's just straight residential. And it allows for in an urban settlement area, a full range of low, medium and high density housing. Next slide, please. Thank you. The current zoning on the subject property is R1. A small portion of it is also zoned agricultural, which is just a small portion of the trail. It's kind of hard to see from here. R1 is the yellow color and green is agricultural. And that's the current zoning. So this is kind of an excerpt of what the proposed zoning through the zoning by law amendment will be. It's kind of highlighted the different areas of what everything is going to be required. And you can leave it on that, Todd, while I just kind of go over this briefly, but there is just some, some things that will be addressed through the zoning by law amendment. So for R1, first density, reduced minimum exterior side yard from six meters to three meters on lot 20. Reduced minimum lot frontage from 15 meters to 11 meters on lots 19 and 20. And both of these are to allow the construction of single detached dwellings on the lands affected. Residential second density are two. The, the request is for reduced minimum interior side yard from two meters to 1.2 meters and reduce minimum exterior side yard from six meters to three meters on block 24. And this is to allow for the construction of semi-detached dwellings on the lands affected. R3 residential third density. The request is to reduce minimum interior side yard from three meters to 1.2 meters, reduce minimum exterior side yard from six to three meters and increase maximum lot coverage from 35% to 45% on block 23. This is for to allow the construction of townhomes. And so this is at the corner of the concession road and County Road 12. There is also a request to rezone open space. So the rezoning of the westerly portion of lands from egg and R1 to open space is to reflect the intended transfer of lands to the township of North Stormont and subsequent dedication of the land for public use as future trail or linear park. The rezoning of blocks two, sorry, 25, 26 and 27, as shown on the draft plan of subdivision are to reflect the intended use of these lands for stormwater management facilities in green space to reflect the presence of the municipal drain that runs along the side of the property. You can go two more, one more. The next one, Todd. This is the draft plan that the United Counties received upon submission. So it's kind of hard to see from here, but this is the proposed layout of the development. And the proposed development is a 22 lot subdivision with two larger blocks. So 22 lots are going to be proposed for single detached dwellings. There is a block, a smaller block, I wanted to say it's block 23, 24, which is going to be proposed for semi-detached units. And then at the intersection, the block that runs along the road, County Road 12, that's proposed townhomes within that block. And then the other blocks that are remaining are for stormwater or the trail, things like that. The lots are to be serviced. Sorry, you can go to the next one. Sorry. Lots are to be serviced by municipal water and sewer connections. They are proposing a mix of single detached, semi-detached in townhomes within the development and one new internal road that will be transferred over to the township upon completion of the subdivision. Agency comments that the United Counties have received to date regarding the plan of subdivision. South Nation Conservation provided comments that they are requesting be provided with a final stormwater management report, detailed lock rating and drainage plan, pre and post development plan and sediment and erosion control plan. Acknowledgements and necessary permitting under their, their mandate are also required. Canada Post has advised that they will be delivering mail to this, to this development through centralized mailboxes. So it's a community mailbox. They have not located where it's going to be placed, but that is currently the proposal for this development. County Transportation is requiring a one foot reserve along the entirety of County Road 12, except for where the entrance is to the new entrance for the road will be. The current entrance, there is a field entrance, kind of that is almost dead set in the middle along County Road 12. That entrance is to be removed and reinstated to county standards. The entrance into the subdivision road drainage infrastructure and all works within the county right of way shall be designed and constructed in accordance with county standards. And they, that they should also be provided with final servicing reports and detailed drawings. So these are all very, these are the comments that we've received to date. The township has not yet provided comments. Normally they do not do that until after this has been held and they've received comments from public and have also seen all the other comments that have been received by the other agencies. So these are the comments received to date from an agency level. And all of these are very standard for this type of development. Public comments received to date. I will let Ruben kind of talk a little bit more in regards to the trail, but there is a part of trail that runs along the back of the property where it connects to County Road 12 at the most southern portion. There is an agricultural entrance that is currently off of County Road 12 where a farmer, sorry, a farming family accesses, goes across that to access their field, which is kind of a landlocked by the municipal drain. So their only concern was that they are able to continue to access that and cross the trail to be able to get their farmer equipment in because it's not accessible off of the concession road. I had briefly spoken to the township about that. Once again, the acquisition or the acquiring of the trail is up to council. Whether you do ask to require that or accept it, that would be up to your discretion, whether you grant access over that, if it will become part of your ownership. But that's the only public comment that our office or the township office has received to date. And then I'll let Ruben kind of take over and then we'll kind of open it up to any sort of questions after that.
Ruben, possibly if I can get you to come up to the podium, that way everybody will hear, hear you better. So welcome.
I don't know if it's shared. Oh, okay. First of all, thanks for having us. I was gonna say, uh, split Connor. My partner is just had his third at 3:38 this afternoon. So, so he's not here, but I'll do my best as a stand in. Now, first of all, I want to briefly about our story or who we are. We've, Tri-Pine, we've been around for the last three years in different format and when our experience in various diff, go to the next slide. For Connor, having excellent expertise at Maddy Homes and, and Goldr Associates as an environmental and geotechnical consultant. And then myself on the next slide. With many years of construction consulting as well as the director of land development at Maddy Homes. And, and then our last, next slide, Greg, who I was hoping was going to be here as a strong pedigree. He sits on the chair of the Ottawa Construction Association and as really our advisory board. Speaking to where we've been. Yeah, speaking of where we've been on the next slide. We recently just finished a beautiful subdivision by the name of Rockford Forest in Brockville. Similar approach, it would actually be the exact same product that we are proposing here on the towns and the semis. So this one was a mix of 19 or 16 towns and, and the balance were semis as well as three custom built if you flip to the next slide. One more. Yeah. As well as three custom, three custom homes that, that all have, yeah, that all have closed as of April 1st. And yeah, we'd be looking to introduce a similar product or building technology to this, this community. So mix of town semis and, and beautiful singles. So in, in all in the same bungalow style. Moving to where we are today, which is our heritage trail proposal, if you could flip one more. Just like Megan just shared, we'd be looking to introduce 16 towns again across three blocks with, with four beautiful blocks of semis. But the, the most attractive piece, like what we really always love in our communities is, is always having something that connects to the existing community. What we did in Brockville was very, very similar in the, in the way that it was surrounded by an existing forest, surrounded by a existing city park in this, and blending that existing infrastructure and community. And not, yeah, not making it such that it's, it's new development. It's just adding to the existing community. So in this case, I see the comments, the one comment we've received from the, from the trail perspective. And we've been reaching out to local community groups on how to, how to transfer those lands or how to convey those lands into the open space and have, still have a meaningful connection to the actual town of Finch and have a walking path that, that the new residents and existing residents can actually enjoy. Yeah. So providing, providing what we would try to establish is like a manicured trail in the beginning that, that sets the standard for what we would call the friends of the trail community group to, to maintain going forward. Proposed, yeah, we proposed to provide the supplies and, and make sure that the trail is fully incorporated or, or integrated into the existing community and into the new community. Don't think I have anything else. I'll open that to questions.
Well, I appreciate that. So maybe I'll start with the members of council. So there's both. I see Peters joined us. So we got Peter, Megan and Noel. So I'll take questions from council to start with. So. Did you want to go ahead?
So thank you. It's always exciting to see new homes opening up in our area. And it's, it's actually nice to see it in a different area than Chrysler for a change. This is, this is nice. Can you talk a little bit more about the trail? Is, is that kind of your concept? Or is it because the land is of a certain type that it can't be used for part of the development? Part of, part of the thing about North Stormont is we're a rural community. And generally with rural, having bigger lot sizes is often a part of the feel of, of, of rural. And to me, if that, if we didn't have that trail, would that open up the opportunity for some of these lot size potentially to be a little bit bigger? Or is there some reason that, that, that is being designated land for the purposes of a trail versus for development use?
Could you just, could I maybe? If I can maybe get you to join just the mic so we can hear better because we are streaming as well. So. Is this through a public comment or is this?
Just answering his question.
But can I maybe get who, who you're naming, who you are?
My name is Cheryl Schneider. I own the little white bungalow that's right on the other side of the creek. So I'm directly affected by this.
So just maybe we'll get the civic address. County Road 12.
County Road 12.
So I guess that's what we're here for. So yeah, go ahead.
So the trail that they're looking at is actually the old railway line. And the way the land goes, our backyards go out and then the trail, it's actually up on a bit of a hill. It's like a, it's like this.
Yeah.
And you couldn't use it for lot development. It's just not made that way at all because of where the railway line is.
Yeah. And then on the other side of that is just, we always target these communities to active seniors and having meaningful spaces for them to actually enjoy where they've built, not just stay in their box is not, is not necessarily the best.
Absolutely. But, but any, any land, if we're to acquire it, will require us to maintain it. And the decision ultimately comes down to, is the investment better in, in that for this small piece of land only? Or is potentially taking the money and investing it in an area that is already established and potentially could be bigger and better for recreation purposes? That's the decision we'll have to make at some point. So I, I just didn't know whether or not enlarging the lots is even an option with respect to utilizing that land.
It really isn't. But on the other side, on the maintenance side, our, our goal is to establish that community group. We've done this elsewhere. We've done this, I've done it in my past with Conrad Maddy and, and certainly in this capacity as well as in Brockville where we have community gardens for that purpose where it is open space to the city, but in the case of its actual presence, it's maintained by the community around it.
If I can just add, I believe that Bell Alliance has an easement over with.
Yes.
So the goal would be, would be a tough goal. So go ahead, councillor McDonald.
And just to clarify, was that intended to form all or part of the 5% parkland requirement?
It would form part of it.
Part of.
We're working with, including parts of the, the stormwater management.
And just looking at that stormwater block and the creek and any setbacks, is that adequate space for stormwater?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's based, based on DCL's David Shafer Engineering's design. Yeah.
And was there any consideration of something like low impact design?
Yeah, those, those are definitely incorporated, especially Howard handling our stormwater drainage at the front. With, 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 well, in the past, it's been where it's subdrain. It's kind of that design on, on the front end.
Okay. Cause it does look like a nice site. Like it's got no obvious planning related issues. It looks like the soil is great. It's being farmed. So it's a good drainage. Like it looks like a great site. Obviously seems like a very smart group of people formed this company and know how to pick their land, which is awesome. I think the trail conversation will be ongoing because we do have a lot of work right now ahead of us rationalizing our recreation and how we offer that to all these communities. So we have to make smart choices when it comes to how we do that. And whether or not it's the best fit for the community. So, but I really appreciate you being here and, and making the presentation today.
Before I speak, any questions coming from that side? So in regards to the, the pumping station, are we able to deal with gravity to go down to the existing pumping station across County Road 13 or 12? So there's no pumping station to be, is there any upgrades? And maybe that's, is there any upgrade to the pump that relates where we need to enhance that?
Break.
Maybe Blake, if you can just give us your.
No, we invested that with Aqua that, yeah, the, the feed that they put into it. It's situation now can handle it and that'd be kind of like the allocation by law. So we, for the sewers, we have lots of allocation for sewers and we're going to have a lot more on water one, because last year we fixed some major problems there in Finch.
And did I see, what is the number of doors? Is it 45? I think I seen, is that the, the number of allocation that, that would be required for the whole site?
16 towns and eight semis.
Who's the mathematician?
Forty-five.
Is it 45? Okay. No, the reason I say that is just to, you know, if you come inside, I believe there's past development that had enhanced for the pipe to go to the lagoon. So for you guys, if you're coming in, everything's, oh, we're good to go to the pump. The pump is there. And I just don't under, like, I mean, that's where the experts will come into play, but to, I'm not saying to get a free ride, but okay, because you're now, somebody paid for that pipe to go from Finch to Chrysler. I think, I believe there's some, or developers in Chrysler that paid extra to bring that pipe. So maybe planning knows this or as far as how that works, where we generate the equalization of, of the cost. So if I'm saying you don't need a pump, maybe Blake can add to that.
That's where we, we charge the capital costs to hook into the, for the water and sewer connections for new development to back pay the original costs that the original property owners paid with the government funding to install the system.
So when you're saying capital cost, you're talking about per household to the builder for each house? Or is there an extra cost for the developer to, to?
It'd be the, a cost for each connection. Like it, the 40, if it's 45 units, water and sewer, it'd be the capital cost for, for 45 water and 45 sewers.
Yeah.
Correct. Which is, but I'm talking about not connecting to our land. I'm talking about the actual line to go that paid to go to Finch to Chrysler and then the development inside that had to increase the pipe to go connect to the pipe. There's been development charges, I believe. I'm just, before I get asked a question, I'm just kind of.
Just to his point, he's saying that, that those fees are inclusive of that capital cost that went before to bring that infrastructure to Chrysler.
Yeah. So we're charging five grand per, and that will help offset the cost of the investment that was made in the past.
Okay. Well, I'll have to get some clarity. So what I get, because the houses in Chrysler are also paying the, the, those fees per household. So it's, I'm talking about the infrastructure of that pipe is where I just want to make sure that, that, and we'll have, have the discussion. The fact that we're maintaining is just that the pump size, if it's adequate now, if it's not, somebody's going to have to pay for it, but the fact that it's accommodating to the 45 connections is more to get an understanding for, for council to. So other than that, I'm gonna ask questions from members of the, the council. If you want to come up and basically state your name and address, and then you can go to the podium so that everybody can hear you. You go right ahead.
So state my name, Michael Chislet, and I live at 41 Richard Street in Chrysler. And I really hadn't anticipated coming this evening because all the development here is in Finch. But some of the, the last council meeting where you were talking about the cost of capital.
Um, but um, some of the, the last council meeting where you were talking about um, the cost of capital for infrastructure and things like that caught my attention. And I started looking at some other stuff, documents relating to the trail, but I ended up looking at some other things relating to the relationship between Finch and Chrysler. So what I have is one over, overreaching question. But I wanna go through um, some background on how I got to some additional questions, which I'll leave to the end. Some of those questions have been alluded to already by council, but I wanted to um, at least give you background and why I'm interested in this thing. So first of all, my overarching question is, has the impact the proposed development in Finch on the Chrysler water wastewater treatment infrastructure been considered? So obviously it has, people have uh, been mentioning that. Now, what I looked at is two documents. So I looked at the Chrysler Wastewater System Annual Report of twenty eighteen. I couldn't find anything any newer. Is there a newer document? It's an annual report. It seemed like it would come out more annually than once every seven years. Does such a document exist? That would be my.
Through the chair, we do an allocation every calendar year. I believe it's three hundred and eighty-five allocations for sewer or water?
Water.
Well, I was just looking at what the um, the, essentially what they're looking, the condition of the wastewater um, infrastructure was, things like that. So I was just wondering if there was a newer version of that. And then the second one I looked at was the villages of Chrysler Moose Creek wastewater master plan for twenty twenty-five. So um, so looking at for background here, the Chrysler wastewater system, just some additional facts here. So it has a capacity of about twelve hundred meters cube per day, okay? Um, has an average flow, this is all in twenty eighteen of about just under six hundred meters cube per day. So it's only about half its capacity. Now, it has peak flows would exceed that. Now that I, the reason I'm bringing that up is because if we have additional development, whether it be in Chrysler or Finch or wherever, are those peak flows going to impact the ability of the lagoons to handle that? Okay, the one thing that really caught my attention is it says the sewage from, and this is taken directly from the documents. This isn't me and making up an idea here. The sewage from Finch takes up forty-five percent of Chrysler's sewage and pump station capacity. Okay, that's a significant amount of capacity here, especially for a place like Chrysler which is growing. Um, there's no mention of that document of the population, so I don't know if it's six hundred like it's mentioned in the planning document. Or sorry, eleven hundred is in the planning document or it's less than that. So there's no mention of that, what it was in twenty eighteen. So we'll keep going with the assumption that twenty eighteen, the population is more or less the same as it is in twenty twenty-one. Okay, so this is where the master plan comes in and is catching my attention in a big way. So it says the plan is to, on the intro page, the plan is to run to twenty fifty-one, okay? Thirty years from twenty twenty-one to twenty fifty-one. Um, says it um, uh, Finch's wastewater, both documents say that Finch's wastewater is treated by Chrysler Surge Lagoons, which everybody in the, the room has mentioned. Um, it says that Chrysler wastewater assets are in fair condition with some deficiencies. Now that, I'd like to, personally, I'd like to see them in good condition. Um, I'll, I'll come back to that one a little further on in here. And it says that Finch's wastewater assets are um, nearly all in good condition and no deficiencies, which is a good thing. Now, um, as far as the population is concerned relating to the master plan, it says that, you know, there's about eleven hundred people in Chrysler right now. And it's going to by twenty fifty-one reach twenty-one thirty. Now, I'm taking this directly from the document itself. It says during the preparation of the master plan, development plans for a total of a thousand sixty unit that accommodate three thousand and thirty people is submitted. The units are to be constructed in four phases of which only phase one comprising three hundred and twenty-nine units, um, which can accommodate eight hundred and seventy people is currently approved. Okay, this is, comes from um, section five point two of that document. Um, this increase is almost as large as the expected growth by twenty fifty-one. Um, because the expected growth, at least according to this document, and I'd be happy to share this with anybody is, and they can find it because it's on the webpage, nine hundred and eighty people. So that's a, that catches my attention in a big way. Um, this is gonna reduce the master plan timeline based on their own graph that they put in here by fifteen years. So twenty fifty-one is no longer twenty fifty-one, it's closer to twenty thirty-six. So now we've accelerated that particular thing. There's no mention in the document of how long phase one is going to take. I don't know if that's takes one year, five years, ten years, no idea about that. And there's no mention of phases two through four. So I had no, um, no ideas about that either. So that catches my attention. We don't know how long that development is, at least I don't know how long that development is gonna take. So the analysis is also taken directly from the document. The analysis uh, results show the difference between the high, medium growth scenarios is very small and what they're going to do therefore, only the high growth scenario is um, process for Chrysler water and wastewater master planning. Now, I'm not gonna talk about water today. I'm only talking about wastewater. There is a whole lot of stuff in there relating to um, our drinking water, which I'm not gonna bother with cause I'd be up here boring you to tears for a while. Um, but it says here, under the high growth um, rate, seventeen units is expected um, with this um, high growth um, projection. The application of the four-phase development under which three hundred and twenty-nine is already approved proposes thirty um, units annually. So what we get out of that is what I just said, is you've now shortened the, um, the timeline by fifteen years approximately.
If I can just maybe add quickly as, as you go on.
He'll free to interject.
If I, so we're basically, what you're discussing here is more the master service plan that we've undertaken and.
Well, you know, we'll get to where I'm.
The numbers, but just to realize, the storm, the lagoons uh, has been in the past when Finch came on board. So it's a municipal lagoon that serves both Chrysler and Finch. So to say, oh, it's taken away from Chrysler, it's not, it's taken, it's, it's basically built as one. So we have to understand that Finch and Chrysler are combined when you're discussing.
Okay, fair enough. That's not something I knew. So um, that's good to know this. The document doesn't state that in any way, shape or form. It just says, states a fact. Um, so the reason I'm interested in this is that there's going to be forty-five units, um, at least as I understand it, being developed in Finch, okay? Now, the master plan says that seventeen units a year is what they're planning. So that for every seventeen units that you add, you're taking off a year of the timeline. So with what's being done in Chrysler right now, you've reduced it by fifteen years and then we're doing an additional forty-five. Well, we've now shortened that down to probably closer to ten. Now, I'm guessing that that sort of should start, when we get into the ten-year um, thing, we should be looking at, yellow light should be start going off here. And then we should be considering that because of, you know, conversations you had last um, last meeting about the amount of capital expenditure that's going to be in place. So I don't, I'm not looking to answer any of these questions specifically today and I'm not opposed to development. My idea here is that we ask the right questions and we make sure that we don't put ourselves in a situation where uh, we go, oh, we need to get uh, this infrastructure um, um, built up to meet the expected demands. So um, one of the questions I think is answered here already. Are the Finch pumping station and uh, sewage pipe sized to handle the additional volume? I heard that, that the pumping station is, is done that way. Is the pipe actually sized to handle the additional? Because, I mean, you can have a big powered pump, but it doesn't necessarily, the pipe, it doesn't matter how much powering, pumping power if your pipe isn't big enough. And I was guessing that that's a possibility. They only sized for a community that wasn't expected to grow. So when they sized, does anybody know the answer to that particular question? Was the pipe sized?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so that's good. That's a very positive thing. Um, now the other one, now you've answered a question, but I'm gonna put it out here anyway. You've answered one of the next questions here. I was saying that given that Finch is, has forty-five percent of the um, um, Chrysler sewer infrastructure, um, is there any particular reason why um, Finch, if it's growing, doesn't have its own sewage lagoons? So that, I think you've said that this was developed in concert with um, Chrysler and Finch, okay?
Well, just to answer after the fact, but I mean, when the decision was made to, it's now becoming a communal system that when uh, more work is, needs to be done, it's all involved. So it'd be all of Finch and Chrysler that is now incorporating the.
Now, I just, okay, so that's great. That's fine. Um, it's obvious that planning had been done in that regard. Now, the question I have is that, um, with relating to the pump itself, I don't know how much uh, growth is expected in Finch, okay? So do we know the pumping and the, the pipe size capacity to say that, you know, we cannot go beyond this particular point? Um, if this is, you know, and do we only go to eighty percent capacity of the pipe, you know, things like that? And um, the next thing relating to that is, but as far as the infrastructure is concerned is um, it was expected to go to twenty fifty-one before we would exceed capacity. Well, now there's additional development on that. Will that additional development increase the rate at which the degradation of the infrastructure occurs? So for um, for example, now the condition is, as the engineers had pointed out, it's only in a fair condition, okay? That doesn't get me excited personally. I would like to see it in good condition and that's the sort of condition I would expect it to be in all, at all times. But given that now we're going to have additional um, load put on it from both Chrysler and from Finch, um, can we figure out how that's going to impact the rate of decline of the infrastructure? And what we need to put in place to make sure that it really stays at a good level as opposed to declines from a fair level to a poor level, which um, would be problematic. Um, and will the additional peak loads be problematic for the sewage lagoons? So for example, um, if um, if we've increased the capacity here and they have instead of peak loads, I think I said they were at um, on average about fourteen hundred uh, meters cube per day. Now, that's a twenty-five percent over capacity and that's probably something the engineers designed into the um, into the lagoons. Now, if with the extra load on it, say it goes to fifty percent. Now, if that is larger than what the engineers had put in place for a safety factor, are we putting ourselves in a position where spills could occur? And if spills occur, what happens with those spills? Will they make it in the South Nation River, given the distance it is from it? So these are, these are questions I'm only asking not to be answered tonight, but to be looked at and um, and looked at as in, um, over time. And I sort of, the last question here is relating to the um, the developer. Now, does developer pay, you're talking about connection fees. Connection fees are only one part of the deal as far as I can see. Now, um, what happens? Are they paying their fair share, the expansion of the sewage lagoon? Um, or at least putting funds away for um, to be expanding it sometime in the future? So this is, uh, I just wanted to make sure that that, um, not just connecting to a pipe that's existing and getting a free ride on the pipe, um, but also saying, well, we're going to put in um, some contingency for the expansion of the sewage lagoons from the additional load that's being placed upon it. So these are the concerns and questions that I had, that I just wanted to have council at least consider and discuss before, you know, the development goes ahead. Um, and I'm saying that I'm not opposed to the development in any way, shape or form. I'm just interested in knowing that the infrastructure um, can handle it and two, can our budget handle it? Um, if um, expansion of the existing infrastructure is required. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So again, I think to answer some of these questions, so Clean Water Agency, our engineers are, so there's a lot of questions there that are not gonna be answered by uh, by your, your elected officials. Uh, to be honest, oh, sorry, go ahead, uh, before I make my final comment, go ahead, councillor McDonald.
It's, they're great questions because it's things that, of course, as council are high priority for us. And, and as such, that's why we do retain so many experts. Um, obviously I'm no, no engineer myself, but I know that we have qualified people who look at these things. The reports that we have have been uh, upgraded and enhanced over the last few years. And I, I think that council is very proud of the fact that we've created a lot of communities that are development ready. Um, the connection fees are a way for us to recover some of that capital cost. But it's, it's all the hard work, planning and effort of staff and council to create the capacity, to ensure the capacity is there. So when people like, I already forgot your name, so it's ruining my whole speech here. No, the gentleman that, from Tri-Pine, Ruben, um, come along that we, that we have capacity and that means we've done a good job. So um, there's lots of questions that deserve answers and they're good questions to ask as a member of the public. But it's just to say it, from my perspective as a councillor, I feel very confident in the work that staff have done to, to prep us to have allocations ready to go out the door. Uh, and one thing we're also looking at is development charges as another way to ensure that we're planning for the future. Um, but of course, with our priority in the province being building homes, we're also trying to walk the line of how to make sure that people like Tri-Pine can come in and provide those homes for people, especially for our seniors. So lots of detailed questions, me giving a really high level answer. But I do think it's really amazing that in Finch, we're ready to bring these homes online so quickly. And I think it's a testament to all, the hard, hard work that's been done.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just add to that, cause I agree uh, with um, with Alison. Um, the uh, our master plan is, is in the process of being um, reviewed right now with the consultants. And I know that we are, we passed this information of the known development activity that's coming in and I expect it would be part of their uh, analysis and part of the recommendations on looking at. So if they need to adjust to, to kinda your overarching comment there, if they need to adjust the projections, I would expect them to do that as part of the, the process. And, and development doesn't always happen in a linear way, the way the charts are always built. Sometimes a developer comes in, builds big, um, and we get a little bit of infill. Um, it's, it's amazing uh, what, how the trajectory of North Stormont has changed since COVID and uh, and how the, the building and activity that's going on. So uh, all good points, I think uh, what, what I'd like to see happen with some of your comments is actually go to the consultant who, or at least the development activity, go to the consultant who's building our master plan so that they can be fully informed on, on where we need to go. Cause even if we reach the capacity, it doesn't mean we can't build additional capacity in the future as well. But the, the earlier you can get that into the uh, into the master plan process, the better you can, you can kinda smooth the build, if you will.
Thank you. So before I finish, is there any other questions from members of the public? Dale, step up in your name and address, please. Turn the, the little.
There we go. Name is Dale Dingwall and uh, I live in the block that uh, is right in front of this division, this subdivision. Um, I've got concerns, the sewage is one of them, but I'd like to know how much distance is gonna be. I see where the road is going now. Uh, I wasn't sure where it was going to uh, to be. And I wanna know how far is it gonna be off of our property line for snow removal and that kinda thing? Cause I, I work for the township too a little bit pushing snow and I know how far they push. And I don't want, I wanna have enough room that if we get snow, I'm not gonna have it in my backyard. But I don't know what the boundaries are. I don't know if it's, when we built a new shop last year, it was fifty feet, but I don't know about these.
Todd, can I get you to slide the, can you slide that diagram over to see Mr. Dingwall?
You want me to just point where I am?
Well, we can't see it right now. If he, can we slide or minimize it? Pass.
Very last piece, yeah, block here. I don't know, I see a little line, but I don't know how many feet that is on my block. Um, and the same with the road. The road is on the east side of my property, I believe. It says street end limit. I assume it's coming out at three, four. Is it? That's where they're gonna make the entrance way? I missed the book. So I wanna know how, what he's doing, what's the rules?
So the only difference and maybe Blake can, when you deal with a county or concession road, we're moving a lot faster than, so this would be similar to subdivisions in town where you don't get as much, but.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, uh, I see where the blocks are. I just don't know what their boundaries are. Are they gonna build right on my fence line? Or are they gonna be out a few feet? Uh, and the same with the road. Is there gonna be ditches on the side? Or am I, they're gonna build it high and I'm gonna get runoff into my property? I'm just curious. I just wanna know what that stuff is. Um, another thing is dogs. With that many units, half the people are gonna have dogs. Half of them are gonna be poor dog owners and they're gonna be in my yard. And you's all know, cleaning up dogs from.
I thought you were gonna say you're starting a kennel.
Anyway, I just wondered, is there any provision? I'm an existing house already and I just wondered, is there, do I have any rights? You know, can you, can a fence be put up to keep other people's animals out? Um, things like that, just uh, that was one of them. Um, the noise and the, and the dust when they build this thing to cow, uh, like, what time do they start building? Is it gonna be five in the morning? Is it gonna go till late at night or? Yeah, that's, I know that's his deal. I know it's not your deal, but that was a question I had. This trail too, this tr- trail that they're donating to the township, it actually, I can throw a stone from my property right across it. I can throw a stone from my property right across it and it's open on the one side. I just, I'll be very upset if I start getting people trespassing and, because even to this day, four-wheelers will come in off the highway and they come up and there's always a gate closed there now. They'll come up on the, on my lawn and out my driveway. And I'm not real crazy about that with all these extra people. So again, I wondered if part of this, the provision is to build some kind of a retaining system, keep people off of it because, uh, I can get pretty ugly too if, uh, I start fighting with, uh, four-wheelers coming up my lawn and rutting it all up and, uh, anyway, that was just a concern as well. And I know I'm not, there's no way it's going to stop the subdivision and I'm not trying to stop it. I just trying to protect my rights too of, of being a property owner. I pay taxes too, pay big taxes. So I'd like to at least keep it semi-private, I guess you'd say. When, when, I know it's not passed yet, but when is the building? Like what's your plan? You hoping to be going in the next year? Time you get all this paperwork done and all your rules? Or like next year kind of things, are putting a road in or what's? Next summer? This summer? So you have to do a road first and all the prep sewer lines and? Yeah, well, you're not going to be building this year. You might get the sewer and the road in, but that'll be about it. I'd be very surprised if you do. Yeah, this snow plowing thing too. What, what's the rule? I know when it's on a municipal road, we can shove back because we own property, township owns property. Center of road out quite a ways on the ditch. But when you're pushing against my boundary, I'm not a township road. So I'm wondering what's the deal for snow removal and how far, you know? It's kind of a new precedent. I don't know. It's not like doing on the road. So I'm curious to know, uh, property distances and all that.
Basically, uh, road, is it a twenty meter road? Okay. So basically twenty meter road.
Much space are you planning between the edge of road to my property?
The road's nine, so you're left with, uh, eleven, so five and a half meters.
From, to my property line?
Yeah. So is what you got, say from the road, from the pavement, say to your property line?
Yeah.
Would be roughly five twenty-five is usually where the curb would sit.
And who, who, you said earlier, I caught the township is maintaining it. So they're going to look after cutting the grass and they're going to look after, because now I mow it all.
Mow all?
I mow the grass right up into the field with, they're developing. So I try to keep the weeds and stuff down. But if you guys are building a road and it's your property, I don't know what the deal is. Like you're going to make a ditch in it or you're going to just be a, like, that's what I'm saying. I don't know how the engineering has been planned for this project. So, yeah, nobody knows, I guess. Yeah. So who, who looks after this then? Be the township cutting it or?
Through the chair, Blake, is it not the responsibility of the property owner to cut and maintain the road allowance in front of their property?
They're proposing the same kind of a subdivision as in Provost.
Yep.
So it'd just be a gentle swale with, uh, uh, a storm's system underneath and inlets.
Okay.
So.
That'll drain, that'll catch the water.
That catches the water and, and that will basically be mobile, same as the Provost subdivision and, and.
The only difference is, yeah, the Provost subdivision doesn't, but boundary against houses, their backyard is off to the fields, like.
The west, uh, the east side of your property would be, it'd be a, like the swale.
Swale there.
So, uh.
Won't be a ditch, it'll just be a swale.
Yeah. So I definitely grant you permission to keep cutting it.
Well, I know you'd like that. Okay. As long as I know that, uh, yeah.
Yeah, it's going on. It's a, it's twenty meter right away. I can't tell you the.
Well, that's fine. I don't think you'll shove snow that far when you're plowing. That's quite a, quite a shove.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'll, we'll be having other meetings, I'm sure. And if I see something's not right, I'll be back. Yeah, I guess that's it for me. All the other stuff I already mentioned. Thank you.
Go ahead, Armin.
Armin Kegi, uh, concession three, four. We own the property right west of that trail you propose. And my concern is we don't have an easement access to that field. And since, oh, when it gets transferred, I was wondering if that could be into the transfer or the kind of easement in the deed, so my access is guaranteed.
And that would be to cross the, the old railway.
The old railway as we do it now. I try.
Right at the end, yeah. So I don't know, uh, maybe if planning can maybe in light, is there somehow something that can be?
Um, I had spoken with Monica. Um, so I had actually spoken with transportation, uh, for this access point, um, already about it. Because when they requested that the entrance be removed, I wanted to confirm that it wasn't that entrance. And I did confirm with them that that's not the entrance they're talking about. They're talking about right in the middle, essentially where you see the number twenty-three is there's, that's where the entrance is. They're not talking about the one at the most southern portion of the field. So the, from a county perspective, they're okay to leave that access there. In regards to ownership, whoever just ends up owning that, whether it remain with the development or a property owner or it lies with the township, it will be whoever's discretion that is. And I know with speaking with Craig, no one wants to limit you to be able to access that property. So I think we're going to try to make it work as best as possible, but it would ultimately be up to the person who retains ownership of that path. But in regards to the access, it's still reme- allowed to remain there.
Which would be either the township or the developer, correct? Is that the only two options that would, who else could fall in?
Yeah, you could sell it to the farmer. Currently the proposal is that the township take over the, the trail. Um, but that is once again up to your discretion, whether you accept that as the parkland or whatever the case may be. Um, but in regards to like the permission to grant access over that, it will lie with whoever it is. But, uh, like it could be sold to a farmer or, or someone else. There's no like set in stone who the path has to belong to.
Yes. And one more thing, once, or if there is a trail going to be made, my concern is fencing, as Dale mentioned, dogs, bikes, four-wheelers, all that kind of stuff. The fence along the trail is done from falling trees and cleanup and whatever. So if, would that be rebuilt and put up a proper fence along the property line? Preferably on both sides, I assume. That's something to look into.
I believe like you look at the Chrysler trail that goes all the way down to the boundary up to the nation.
Never been there.
I don't believe that, uh, there's no fencing that was put on. It's farmer's field on each side. And it's actually maintained quite, so I don't know, uh, uh, like how much it goes basically only from concession two, three to down the road twelve. So I think it's going to be more.
But still, I mean, we had issues before with four-wheelers, dirt bike and all kinds of stuff, driving through crops.
Yeah. So I don't, look, there's probably four-wheelers already that are going by there. So I don't know what, what the answer is.
Then I put the gate up. That helped a little bit, but still once there is a trailer, public trail, who's stopping them?
I think for tonight, the issue is not really pointing fingers at the people that are buying those houses. Yeah, yeah.
I know when you somehow, those issues are going to increase. Because all these neighbors are close and people tend to think everything is theirs and they can do whatever they want, whether they want, go whatever they want. I asked, and I was, what kind of provisions are in line that there's restrictions to how people move? That's all, that's all.
Yep. Through, through the chair, and this is just my, my opinion as CAO, uh, with more pedestrian traffic on that trail, they will be, the, the vehicles will be policed and you'll probably see less vehicular traffic on that, that trail, in my opinion. The individuals that are using the trail, most people would try and avoid a highly used pedestrian trail just because there'll be more calls to police and there'll be more enforcement. But that's just my opinion.
Pierre, as Rick, did you want to maybe add?
Yeah, just a few questions as a recreation director, as I'm looking at the, the length and the size of this trail. If we go a five percent parkland, it seems to be a lot more than the, the five percent, the point six, two acres. So will the township be obligated to buy the excess property if they ever decide to use this trail from the, the subdivision owner to have access to the end of the trail? Because this would be more than this five percent parkland. So if council does, does see that they want to use this trail as, uh, parkland exchange, we're over a five percent capacity. So will there be, council be, have to pay the difference of the five percent to a six or seven percent of their giving or the subdivision will give it all, even if they're past the five percent parkland.
That's discussion.
And, yeah, and we don't have the width of the trail over there. I know in Chrysler's thirty-three meters, the trail from, uh, uh, Bell Canada Alliance. And we'd like, it'd be interesting to see what the width of the trail is with the, the proper width with the abutment of the trail, where you can't plant any trees, where you can't put a fence up, where you can't. I know you have concern about the fence along this trail. If we looked at the restriction that council signed with Bell Alliance, is we're not allowed to put a fence up along the trail? No?
There's a fiber.
There's a fiber optic and they have, had to have access anywhere on the trail they want. And same thing, we can't plant trees along the trail because they, they got fiber optics there. So there's a restriction in the contract that we already signed as, I mean, probably when we purchased this. So what's going to be this restriction one, if council decides to take this? Is we, we'll be very limited what we want to do. And second of all, we don't have the staff to maintain this. Though there's an offer of, of creating friends of the trail. Um, we have experience with this and how far it goes. We're lucky. We have some, lots of volunteers here. Maybe it'll be a new community that's going to create new volunteers. But at one point, we have to make sure what we're going to do here is feasible for everyone. And we don't have an extended invoice of buying some lands that we don't really want. That's all my call. Thank you.
Thank you. So Armin.
I spoiled it.
So we'll finish with Armin. So did you have further questions, Armin, or?
Yeah, just the access and defense concern so far. Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any further questions on, uh, for tonight? Like I said, this is the, uh, we're not voting on anything. We're just accepting, uh, their report. Was there, before I finish off, was there any questions left on this side? So basically I'm pro-development. I, I want to see towns grow. I found that we've lost, uh, a lot of services in many of our towns. And, uh, due to the fact that it kind of went stale and I'll use Chrysler an example. Uh, I grew up there and it was thriving. Whenever, whenever I was young, it was a booming, uh, small town like many towns had. Uh, we had gas stations in every town in North Stormont where right now we're sitting with one station in Monklin. So this is where I'm seeing the, the benefit. When you look at Chrysler started off with a small twenty-lot subdivision and grew to where we are today. It livened up our towns, uh, and I suspect it will do the same to Finch. So when you look at Finch, you bring in, it's forty-five houses. If it's young families that are coming in, because houses will be more affordable probably in Finch than you would see it in the city of Ottawa. So if we can see forty-five young families coming in, it just, so it's just something that will make, put life into the village and just expand with, with that small. So I'm very looking forward to seeing this project, uh, move forward. Uh, some of the questions I had, like I said, it's all about, you get, uh, uh, some residents. I've talked to the one, uh, past developers that are saying, hey, you know, we covered this and that's why I'm asking questions, because I'll be asked those questions and I'm just, uh, so we're going to hopefully have a great relationship with Tri-Pine, get, uh, get this, uh, moving. But at the same time, the public, I fully support, uh, uh, you coming out. It's your best interest. You live all next door. Uh, so it's, there is positives, uh, when you state that the conditions of our, uh, our services and the cost and hoping that, well, that's what we need. I remember three years ago, two, three years ago, we redid the water tower in Chrysler. And when that came through, we put it to tender and that was blown away to get a million dollar cost estimate to do this thing. It came in, uh, eight and change, but it's, it came in less. But at the same time, we're looking at five, six hundred houses that are covering this. You go to a next town that's got five thousand, they still have one water tower, but it kind of spreads the, spreads the, the cost. So as we move forward, that the, uh, allocations that are put forward, uh, and we do have a, an increased percentage to, to just maintain that so that we can, when time comes, be able to re-maintain and look at, uh, our storm pond and look at water and not get caught where we're behind the eight ball and staying ahead of the game. So. With that said, I think for tonight, we still have a, a meeting to run. We also closed meeting. So if there is no further question, uh, I would like to thank Megan and Peter, I'm sure had support in this, for your time with the presentation. Ruben, I'm sure we'll, uh, get to, uh, and hopefully we will meet Connor as well. Do you know what, uh, was it a boy or a girl? Girl. Father of three girls here, so I'm, uh, so anyways, I will, uh, I will put this, uh, to an end and then we will move on with our agenda. For those that do want to stay, you're more than welcome. Uh, if not, enjoy the rest of your evening. Moving on to, uh, delegation, so we have, I believe Christina, uh, that is here to, uh, report on the auditor's presentation for our 2024 draft financial statements. Good evening, Christina.
Good evening. I understand the clicker's not working, so I'll, I'll let you know when I need you to skip, if you don't mind. I'll bring it a little closer. Is that better? Yeah, perfect. Um, so hi, I'm Christina Morgan. I'm a partner at Welch LLP. I've actually been on the township of North Stormont audit for multiple years now. Started as a junior manager, um, and now a partner on the files. So I've got a lot of history with the township and happy to be here tonight. I understand that everybody has been, uh, has received a copy of the draft, uh, draft financial statements ahead of time. Um, so I'm assuming you've had a chance to go over it. So I'll go over a high level review. And if you do have any questions, I can definitely take those at the end. All right. So first up is the audit status. So the audit has, has been completed and is subject to approval of, um, the financial statements tonight by, by yourselves, by council. And the signed representation letter by the CAO and the treasurer, which I do have on me tonight as well. If they are, um, approved, we can get those signed right away. The financial statements, as you can see in your package, have been draft, have been stamped draft. They will be stamped draft until they are approved. So once the statements are approved, then you will receive the, uh, the final versions, which will have the draft stamp removed in the letterhead as well. So moving on to, perfect, thank you. Uh, page two and three is the independent auditor's report. So we have issued a qualified audit opinion. This is the second year in a row for a qualified audit opinion. And I'll go over what that means. The audit opinion is clean, but we have one qualification. And that has to do with the asset retirement obligations standards. This was a new standard that was introduced by public service, public service bodies accounting standards, uh, last year. And what that enti- that, what that entitles is whenever you have asset retirement obligations, they want you to, uh, the new standard asks for you to bring in consultants to take a look at any of, any of your assets that could have asset retirement obligations, such as buildings with asbestos. Um, if you have arenas with, um, ammonium coolant lines and they want you to bring in consultants, figure out how much that would cost in order to remediate those sites and then bring those costs in current and then amortize them over their useful life. The township has not done that exercise and that is why the statements are qualified. The township has not done that exercise and that is why the statements are qualified because there's that one part. Of the P S A standards that is not, um, that has not been done as, as of yet. So other than this one qualification, the audit opinion was clean and the audit opinion, uh, the audit opinion has been dated June tenth. Assuming that it would be approved tonight at tonight's council meeting. So moving on to the statement of financial position. Thank you. Moving on to the statement of financial position, your financial assets, those are your assets that have claims of future cash flows. So financial assets. Uh, now you're sitting at nine million dollars in financial assets, financial liabilities, just under eight million. So you do have excess financial assets that are there in order to meet those obligations. So you're sitting at a good spot. Where you're able to meet all of your, your current obligations. Your non-financial assets are your items such as capital, capital assets, because they do not have claims of future cash flows. Accumulated surplus is your accumulation of annual surpluses since the inception of the township. So you've got a healthy, healthy statement of financial position. Perfect. Moving on to page five, statement of operations. Operating revenues this year, nine point six million with your operating expenditures, just under nine point five million. It's your net operating income. Hundred and twenty six thousand. That's pretty much a break even year, which is great. Um, that's a one, one percent of your total revenues is your net operating income. Um, so you had a really balanced year. Whenever it comes to your capital and other revenues at two point four million, those are the revenues you received for your capital, uh, capital expenditures and donations. So really, those are those excess. That help offset some of those capital costs during the year. So that two point four million, that went into your capital, your capital additions. You'll see as we get into the notes, the financial statements, you had three point six million in capital additions over the year. So. You had two point four million that went to offset those capital costs. So really, whenever you're taking a look at your, your fiscal year, you're looking at your net operating income in terms of. How much you tax, how much your op, your actual operations costed during the year, and it was pretty much a break even. Once we get into the notes of the financial statements. There's just a couple of notes that I'd like to um, to bring to your attention. So on page. On page eight. Uh, sorry, page thirteen, going to page eight, going to note eight. As I mentioned before, you had three point six million in uh, capital asset additions. So you had a really great fiscal, uh, again, a really great fiscal year. You had uh, pretty much a balanced, balanced budget in terms of your operating surplus. Plus you put three point six million of assets into your communities that you serve. So. Very active year. Um, great to see that. On page fourteen, looking at your accumulated surplus. And looking at your reserves, you did increase your reserves over the year again. Um. Looking at the composition of the reserves, uh, we just want to make sure that you continue to, to fund those reserves that you have. Have on hand. And again, those reserves are increasing as you have accumulated surplus each year. That is, um, that adds to your reserve balance. And lastly, the last thing I'd like to really point out is going to page eighteen. Note fourteen is your expenses by object. So one of the things that we do, uh, again, under P S A's. Is to take a look at your expenses by object. So if you take a look at uh, that note comparing twenty twenty four to twenty twenty three. Overall, your expenses, nine point four million compared to last year of eight, just under eight point four million. So your variances year over year are, are very reasonable. The amount that you spent on wages and benefits. Uh, very reasonable with the uh, with the cost of living, your interests on debt. It did go up this year, but that's because you've invested more in the community. You did take on some additional loans this year. Um, so all of these increases that we saw from last year were to be expected. And I'm open to any questions.
So I will take question. Go ahead, Councilor Bajelli.
Actually, just like to offer a comment. One, thank you very much for, for the presentation and uh. I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate staff because when I'm looking at the, going through our, our financial and our, and our, our statements. And seeing that our net operating income is in line with our tax, where we should be as far as taxation. When we're seeing that we're operating and we're projecting and we're hitting where we are budgeting. We're not hitting up our taxpayers. Means you guys are doing a great job as far as what you're presenting to us in, in the pre-budget stage and right through the budget approval and then we're able to stick with that. So. Thank you very much for all your work is that when I see this up towards the end of the year, it's a, it's a feel good. Thank you.
Any questions? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Detchum.
I echo those remarks and thank you for the presentation. Um, just any comments on our debt load associated with our, our um. Overall, again, as a percentage of our overall budget, um, as compared to other municipalities, like are we in generally in good shape?
I haven't compared to each other municipalities. That's some, that's an exercise that I can do. Um, I would have to look at. Not all the other municipalities have their twenty twenty four statements out and really depends on the amount of, um, if you look at your projects, your population, it's really going to vary. Uh, based on municipality. The other thing to note is your, if you go to the last page of the financial statements, which is page twenty, you have a bunch of stats. So we do take a look at your municipal debt and annual debt charges. And it's been pretty consistent with the amount of tax, your tax base, with your increase in, in net assets, the amount of debt that you've been taking on. Whenever you look at ratio analysis has been very consistent. There hasn't been any high spikes. So there's been nothing alarming to say. That you aren't, um, that you're above those debt ratios. We also do an exercise as part of our audit, um, as part of our audit. To take a look at um, the prior year's F I R. And actually, one of the F, one of the items in the F I R is your debt charges and the debt capacity. And there is a debt load that the municipality is not allowed to surpass. And whenever I did do that test this year, you were well below that threshold to be uh. To, to have any worries.
Okay, yeah, I know. I don't need you to.
Yeah, I won't get into details or the calculation.
Are we, are we, uh, you know, well within our.
You are well within your.
Perfect, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilor McDonald.
Um, yeah, echo the congratulations from Councilor Bajelli and on a great year, it looks like from, from what we can see at least. Um, just for my own understanding on page eighteen, the segmented information, I was just curious about. You know, it looks like surpluses on transportation environment, two million and half a million water sewer. Almost four hundred in general. Like it just seems like there's a lot of excess revenue compared to expenditures. Which is obviously not sounding like a bad thing. It just seems like a lot of money. I was wondering if you could explain that a bit.
Yes, of course. So um, you're referring to note ten, which is on uh, are you looking at the segmented disclosures, note ten?
Yeah, ten.
Yes. So keeping in mind that in the top portion here, the revenues, that also includes, whenever we break it out into segmented. It includes those capital funding that you received. So those uh, so this isn't really, because it's showing you the overall surplus of the two point five million. But that has to do with, it's, you know, almost two point five million in capital funding that you've received for those projects putting on and those. The, that capital funding has been allocated based on the departments that it serves. So. If you're looking at your capital transfers during the year, you know, just under general government, there's another four hundred thousand there. Capital funding that went in during the year. Um, so then if you take that out and you're looking at your general government, it's pretty much a break even. Uh, looking at transportation, again, you've got two point, add two hundred and ninety seven thousand, plus you had other funding there as well. So there is all of those, it's those capital funds that are showing up in this note.
And you wouldn't see an expenditure for that.
No, because it's been capitalized. So under P S A's, right, you have to, you have to show all of the capital funding that you received as revenue. But then the expenses associated are capitalized. So you don't see that offset within the statement of operations.
All right, that's great. Thank you.
No problem.
Any further questions? See none. So as far like some of the questions were answered from what uh, I uh. Well, some would have fallen in twenty twenty five, but I just look at when you do get to the auditor's report, you're kind of looking at numbers. I find that we've had. Expenditures from uh, a new fire hall that was built. We have uh, a new hall that was built in Moose Creek. So we took on a lot of capital. Asset that the, this building here, which is going to fall into the, the realm of uh. But I think overall, it's much needed infrastructure that was, that was needed. When we look in the Moose Creek wreck with uh, basically a three million dollar expense that. Hits our book at roughly a million. So, so the grant funding and, and donation that came through. Uh, so everything, I think same with this building. I think we're. Uh, we're way ahead of, uh, if we would have had to have start looking to build a new, uh, so I think it's just now. It's maybe coming down those big items that are, and I believe that hopefully we can. Stretch out with the fact that we've get those, those donations that are coming in, which Councilor McDonald was talking about, which are big numbers that, that are kind of onto the side, but uh. Nope, congratulation to staff. I hope they worked well with uh, with the auditors to get this all completed and uh. Again, thank you to, to council for uh, we got enough tough go with our next budget, but this twenty twenty four, I think was uh, was good. So thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you.
So moving on, do we have one more? I believe Todd is. Todd, Todd joins us all the time. Now he's here for a purpose. So, so uh, not that that's not a purpose, but uh, if we can uh. Jump on to the website presentation, so.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just before I get started with the, uh, the presentation, just want to let you know our stream is up and running tonight without any issues whatsoever. So uh, I'm sure the public is enjoying uh, tonight's proceedings. Uh, so with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I can begin the, the website uh, presentation. So uh, back in the May of twenty twenty one, the township of, of North Stormont completed a process to create a new website. Uh, up and up, a Canadian web development firm was retained at that time. And uh, was given instructions to prepare a, a new website with a fresh new look and, and obviously some new features. Uh, this project, as you know, was completed in conjunction with S D G counties and uh, the township of North Dundas, all of whom received uh, new websites at that time. Uh, the cost breakdown, if I remember correctly, the total cost was a hundred thousand, fifty thousand of that was covered by S D G counties and twenty five each for uh, the lower, uh, lower tiers. Um, so uh, earlier this year, uh, the township entered into an agreement with S D G counties. Uh, with respect to corporate communications and we provide, as you know, stewardship of North Stormont's online pursuits and, and communications activities. That includes an agreement that was set up as kind of a cost recovery, uh, your worship, uh, where uh, um, S D G counties bills North Stormont for, for staff time. Um, and uh, we oversee web updates, we oversee social media interaction and, and we obviously uh, take care of the council streams when we get sound. And we do other duties as assigned. Uh, the features of the website, your worship, we, there's an array of, of features included. Uh, obviously we can start with local government and council. We have council meetings and agendas on our website, uh, property tax rates and budgets, uh, bylaws and enforcement are included there as well as tendering process and, and bids. Um, the news and notices section is probably updated the most often. It's regularly updated as we receive information. Excuse me, from partners and, and uh, other organizations. Uh, that includes community announcements, your worship, uh, P S A's and emergency management communications, as well as public meeting notices. And finally, we have an array of, of details with respect to municipal services. That includes environmental services, parks and rec, obviously, uh, roads, public works and, and permitting. Traffic. So I had promised to bring uh, tonight, the verbal, uh, verbal update with respect to traffic numbers. I don't have that and I'll tell you why. There's been a bit of an issue with respect to our Gmail account. Uh, that uh, the website points its um, information to. It is collecting information. It's just not being presented on that, that page. And Google is advised this is going to take forty eight hours to get access to that account because it hasn't been looked at in a while. Um, so I'd be happy to come back at the next council meeting and provide those numbers if, if you'd like to see them. Um, but that's the reason why we don't have them this evening and my apologies uh, for that. Uh, social media though, we uh, uh, obviously we have stewardship over um, the township's social media accounts. Uh, so the North Stormont uses Facebook and X, uh, formerly known as Twitter to disseminate information for public consumption. And North Stormont follows kind of a, a simple but effective strategy with respect to communications and, and this is kind of a strategy that we follow across the region. Uh, we've done this at North Dundas and we obviously do that, this at S D G counties. And what we do is all of our public facing information resides on the website. And what we use social media for is to point to that information. And sometimes that information might be something as simple as a council meeting. Or it might be something new with respect to a planning initiative. So what we do is, is because the public isn't often going to our website to find that information, we use social media to, to point to that. We found that to be a fairly effective and, and important way to, to do this. So um, like I said, while northstormant.ca acts as the online repository for public facing documents, we use social media to, to point to those, that information and alert the public to the, to any changes. So Facebook has approximately twenty eight hundred followers. I would suggest you uh, for a township the size of, of North Stormont, that's fairly healthy. Uh, all of our news and notices are posted here as well as up to the minute P S A's. I typically follow a, a protocol where we put one post a day on social media. That kind of um, allows the algorithm to do its thing and not bury other, other posts. Sometimes we'll scale that up to two posts a day depending on, on events and we typically try to keep it to one or two. We will change that um, that philosophy in the event of an emergency or, or anything that requires up to the minute communications for residents. Uh, fortunately, we haven't had a situation or too many situations like that. The one that I can recall off the top of my head was the ice storm a couple of winters ago. We were providing updates regularly that evening uh, to folks. Uh, so approximately, like I said, twenty eight hundred followers on, on Facebook. Um, X is a little bit different. We only have ninety seven followers. Uh, all the, the same news and notices are posted there and as well as the up to the minute P S A's. I would suggest your worship, if, if, if we wanted to entertain a, a discussion around X, um, it might be my suggestion that we. Not use X only because by and large, I'm going to suggest to you ninety nine percent of the communications we have for the public through social media is through Facebook. Um, and I'm, I'm going to suggest to you that the X account was probably created um, before I came on. Um, and it's, it's fine, uh, but it's not really driving any traffic. Um, and it, it may end up being a situation, I would suggest to you that we could consider. Um, relieving ourselves of that option if, if we need to. Uh, a future option. So um, to maintain a relevant and user friendly online presence is generally recommended to refresh your website every two to five years. Uh, next year, twenty twenty six will mark five years with uh, the North Stormont website in its current iteration. Uh, likewise for North Dundas and, and S D G counties. Um, it would be our recommendation at this point that we consider engaging in a process to determine the scope and feasibility of a website refresh. I want to couch that comment just by suggesting to you that I have heard nothing from um, North Dundas to suggest they're interested in, in entertaining that exercise. And I can tell you S D G counties is not uh, at this point going to consider a website to, a refresh. There may be uh, options to those websites that could be augmented or changed, but I don't think at this point it would be fair to suggest anybody's talking about doing wholesale changes to those websites. Uh, however, um, if it would be our further recommendation, i- if we were to consider that type of a, a process, it's a solicit feedback from elected officials, staff and the public concerning website changes. Such a plan could involve a, a community engagement by way of surveys later this year. And we would obviously ask staff and elected officials to provide feedback on the website at, at their convenience. And I would suggest to you, your worship, at this time, there's more than enough time to consider this uh, in um, in preparation for twenty twenty six budgets. That would be the, the basis of my presentation, your worship. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Uh, go ahead, Councilor Bajelli.
Uh, thank you, Todd. Appreciate that. Just a couple of questions uh, with respect to the, to the website and one, one to the website and one to social media. Uh, the toggle function or the, the toggling function to be able to access the website in French, is that a capability?
It is.
That, uh, and is it fully, and I know some of them, it, it's done, it, it's not, it's all A I based, that, that does the, the translations. Uh, so are we having people that are actually having to look at the, the French version to make sure that the translations are coming off in a.
Are we having people? Is that the question?
Are people actually having to look at the, at the French version to make sure that the, the messaging is coming across because sometimes the uh.
Uh, so the short answer is no, we haven't had anyone look at that. We certainly could do an audit to that end. Um, so the website functionality, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll just get maybe our treasure. So if, there you go.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I asked that to Todd tonight because I couldn't find it. If you go to the North Stormont website and at the bottom. There's language options like lots. So you can change the whole website into French if you wish.
Right. So my, my one concern is again, because most of this, it is all A I driven, sometimes the translation is not the greatest. So. Whenever I do in my professional career as well, it does have to be done in English and French. That we do have a set of eyes to make sure like, hold on, this, this French page does not look anything like it. Uh, and then I would suggest if it is that buried uh, towards the bottom, that there would be uh, an icon towards the top of the page that say, let's see just be devil fast said, like click here kind of thing. Just for a quick translate to, to French. The second question with, uh, has to do with social media and. And your idea potentially retiring X and X is very. One-way communication anyways, and it is a little bit going by the wayside as far as. Outreach, but we are finding a trend of people moving even toward, uh, off of Facebook more towards Instagram. And would that be a consideration, being that the two platforms are easily interchangeable as well to, to kind of. Put X to bed and maybe try to, to ramp up on the Instagram side.
I would be happy to undertake that. It's a, to your point, a very simple process. So it's essentially as easy as creating an Instagram account for North Stormont. On the backend, uh, the posts are, it's automatic. Uh, so we use it for uh, the S D G counties. And when I post the, uh, post to Facebook, it automatically goes to Instagram. So I, I think that would be a wonderful suggestion. Uh, and just to follow up on your initial point with respect to um, the, um, the French translation. So yeah, so there is an option. It is at the bottom of the page. Uh, we can certainly make a request of up and up to move that up. Uh, I'm not going to lie with respect to web developers. When you ask them to do something, it is a very expensive process. I just want to give you a very simple example. We asked them to change, we did it on our own. We asked them to change the um, uh, address for this building. They advised us that it would cost two hundred dollars to do that and it would take two weeks to get it done. Um, so which is fine. I understand that process, but um, just to advise. So which is fine. I understand that process, but just to advise you, sometimes when you start to do that, it can cost a lot of money. However, I would be happy to undertake a an audit of the of the French language on that website and and to ensure.
Couple of spot checks because it is sometimes and and.
Yeah.
Looking towards Nancy Anne, who's saying that she does kind of have a look at that as well to verify that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Deputy Mayor Denton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Todd. Yeah, I agree with the comments. X, I don't think is 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 being used and and is is relevant. I like your idea, although I've never used Instagram, so. Anyhow, it may just be us old people who are continuing to use, you know, Facebook and the website. So. Yeah, I don't I don't know whether or not our website is being fully utilized or not. So I don't think there's a need for for refresh, but what I find happens is when we do go through a refresh, we often adopt new practices that creates two different variations for finding stuff. Because we don't necessarily go back and update the the information that's on the website according to the practices that we are now starting to adopt. For example, I can't remember who it was. I think it was a member of the public who said they couldn't find the current allotment report. But they could find an old one, and I experience that all the time when I'm going on the on the website, when I go searching for something. And I think it's a backend process. I think we used to store it here, but now we don't store it there anymore and and we it's now embedded inside of a a council meeting report or something like that. So two things in that. We may want to take a look and see whether or not how consistent over time some of our our repositories are. The second thing is, I find I have to use two different search engines sometimes to find something, and I've never it's never clear as to what which one to use. There's the main one on the homepage, but then if you go into the meetings, there's a search box in there and you can search that, and it seems like that one will search, the second one that's in the meetings will actually search for contents of meetings that are posted, but you can't get them off the main bar, which is where most people are going to want, if they're looking for something, they'd like to go there. So I don't know. I don't think a refresh would help that. I think it's our practices. And whether or not our practices can be cleaned up or whether or not our search function can reach in or something like that. Anyhow, those are symptoms that I'm describing that maybe you can comment on.
Sure. Well, I can address that that issue specifically, and you're absolutely right. So North Stormont is a little bit different with respect to how it presents its agendas publicly compared to some of the other websites I'm familiar with. I forget the name of the service. It's a third party service, but when you click on the link on our website, it takes you to another link, and it has all of that information. I'm going to suggest to you, that's the issue you're running into there is that that third party service is you're searching documents directly located within that service. When you're searching the search function on our website, you're searching our website, and that would be an area of confusion. So what I would suggest, perhaps in an effort to perhaps get around some of these issues, is I I don't mind putting together almost like little training videos, not only for for internal staff, but for the public as well. Here is where you find XYZ, and if you click on these buttons, you will find access to this. And we could we could run that on a weekly basis and every week change the subject matter, and perhaps that would be a way to provide some insights to the public in terms of where to find information. But I'm not sure if that's answering your question.
Personally, because I part of my career was dealing with websites and stuff like that as well. And I'm personally not a fan of of training videos on a website. Somebody who's coming there is not going to, in my opinion, 90% of the people are not going to watch a video to figure out how to how to use it.
Apologies, I I meant on Facebook, we would put those videos there.
Either way, either way, people aren't going to spend their time learning their municipality's website. They probably would rather watch a Netflix movie or something like that. But anyhow, if 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 there are things that we can do to train staff to. So it I guess it's maybe it's iCompass that we use now that that we where we build our agendas and and that's where people search. Yeah, I I don't know whether there's anyhow, it's 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 an issue that I guess I'd ask if we can think about how how we can do that. Like, can could staff put the content of the staff meeting or at least key documents of the of the of the council meeting in the areas where they are searchable through the website? Is there a practice we could adopt there so that some of these documents that are being accepted as official documents actually get stored in the in the website in such a way that they are searchable through the website?
So the answer is yes, through your your worship. I'd be happy tomorrow, I think I can do it. But I'd be happy if not tomorrow, I'm I'm back on Monday to create a page for exactly what you're talking about. So we can take the I can just make it part of my responsibility that when public meetings are completed, we'll just take those documents and upload them to that page. So that could be anything from minutes to agendas to anything that's really contained in a public report will automatically be included, if if that's what you're thinking.
I it sounds like what it sounds like a solution for what I'm thinking, because then people can just go in and use the main search bar on the homepage, which I think is what people will instinctively do and and still find the content of the meetings without having to go into the meeting portal and use the iCompass search.
Perhaps if if I may make a suggestion, Your Worship, I'd be happy to come back at the next meeting, not only with the the numbers we talked about earlier, but examples of of this, if if you think there would be some value in that.
Thank you. Yeah.
Any further questions? So I think like times on our side, I think it's something that I'm with you as far as doing the potential changes to the website. It's more driven by if we if we see issues arise and then we kind of. But for now, it's good to see the numbers. It's good to kind of see what what's out there. I've, I guess, being mayor has his privileges. I just phone Craig. So anyways, I, like I said, I look forward. We have Todd's number, so if there is anything, the main intent for council, I believe, is just to make make sure we drive out the message to our constituent in a fashion that they can go on there and not spend, you know, and get frustrated. So if we can facilitate, that's awesome. So.
Happy to help you in that endeavor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we've gone through our delegation. So now we're going back to. I think we should be able to go through this fairly quickly. So item seven, the adoption of our pre minutes of our previous meeting. Madam Clerk.
Be it resolved that be approved as presented, special meeting April 14, 2025, regular meeting May 27, 2025. Moved by Deputy Mayor Denton, second by Councilor McDonald.
Any questions on the previous meetings? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion is carried. There's no committee of local boards. Moving on to item nine, receiving our monthly staff reports and recommendation. Madam Clerk.
Be it resolved that the following monthly reports be received by law enforcement, building, fire, recreation, facilities, public works, deputy clerk, C O clerk. Moved by Counselor Bagelley, second by Counselor McDonald.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Denton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I'm not sure I've ever seen a deputy clerk report before. Is that new?
Through the chair, yes, it is.
Okay, no, fantastic. No, it's great. So thank you for adding adding that in. One of the items in there, I think, were FOI requests. So I'm just wondering, it looks like there's been quite a bit of of activity on the FOI requests. There's not a lot of detail in this report, and I'm not asking for detail right now. But I'm just wondering if at some point in time we could get a little bit more information on the the amount of effort that's being put forward in FOI requests and potentially the amount of compensation. Because I know we can charge back for some FOI activities, some compensation, we may be getting to help offset some of the costs that come with the with those requests.
Through the chair, I'll allow the deputy clerk to elaborate, but as the council is aware, some of these are very quick FOI requests and some are very exhaustive. We do provide estimates to the requister prior to proceeding. I I assume we could include the estimates, but we'd have to be very cautious in any other information we provide. So we could provide some a bit more detail.
Yeah.
But yes, it has been a rather hectic time. And again, we we find this is cyclic where we'll get a burst of requests. And then, of course, it will be quiet for some time. So it's it's very, it fluctuates.
That's great. I I realize that there's privacy aspects, and I would fully expect you to follow those. It's just to get a sense for, again, the amount of effort that staff is putting forward. And effort also turns into costs that the rate payer may have to bear unless it that cost is recovered. So just just to get a high level sense of that would be.
And there is a risk, for an example, I'll I'll keep it high level. But when we are providing the estimate to the requister, we're still trying to collect the data because of the time constraints that the deputy clerk has. So it can be very, again, exhaustive, and significant number of hours can be used to collect these this data. And then, of course, the requister can always decline.
Yeah.
Which which does happen. So that cost to the township is still there, and we do not recoup that from the cost estimates.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you. And that that may be one of the things I'll be watching for is it's not really a cost to the township, it's a cost to the ratepayers, right? And so, yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Any question for the questions? So that was on my my list, so I will not. It's just I I find it's legislated. FOI is there for a reason. Sometimes you're just now identifying for, I feel that there's aspect of, and that's for maybe the elected official to look at. But dealing now with whether it's cameras dealing with, like, there's so much now involved that is it potentially for a private individual versus an aspect that is in in the realm of the municipality? So anyway, there's there's discussions to be had, and I think it's it's no different than the integrity commissioner's report where I think it's being looked at and maybe identifying where where we can where this will will go. So that was one. I just want to make a comment. I Andre is not here, but I'm looking at the numbers for the building report and seeing that development that, you know, again, with with the Finch is those numbers are, and I'm looking forward. I think we've had quite a few years where the building department is in its own silo that it cannot be. And I think I don't like pulling from reserves, but this is potentially looking where we can maintain our own just with cost recovery items. So good work on that. Seeing no further questions under the staff reports, all in favor. Motion is carried. Moving on to item 9.2, lift holding zone in regards to zoning by law, number 40-2025.
The Council of the Township of North Stormont receives and accepts report number P D 03-2025 from the Planning Department to remove a holding zone from subject lands as described in this report to be passed later by bylaw. Moved by Counselor McDonald, second by Counselor, or second by Deputy Mayor Denton.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the zoning? So why would the zone be under a hold? What would have brought that to to put a hold on that property?
In this case, it's because it was a split zone. There was part of it residential and part of it was industrial. So the idea was to have a site plan approved, which kind of separated those areas out before they could start to build and and use the land so that the owner wouldn't start to put all the equipment and all the industrial things on the residential side. So that's why it's here in front of council today.
Thank you. So any further questions on that? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion is carried. Moving to 9.3, vesting of property.
The Council of the Township of North Stormont approves report number F I N 10-2025 from the Treasurer for the vesting of roll number 041101601130010.10.0000. LeBrosse Street, PIN 60118-0353, LT Part Block O Plan 66, as in TR 15312. Except TR 17086, TR 17744, TR 19353 S 70261. That was not sold in the tax sale of May 7, 2025, to add to its inventory of land. And furthermore, that the Council of the Township of North Stormont approves writing off the unpaid taxes in full. Moved by Deputy Mayor Denton, second by Counselor McDonald.
Thank you. So before I go to you, Kim, just to be clear, so on the photo that was put that showed, are we looking at it? It's the black marker, little square that's in behind. Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it is.
Perfect. Okay. Any questions in regards to? Go ahead, Counselor Shane.
That photo, is that parcel of land butt up against Moose Creek?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it does. And that's the reason why I'm I'm kind of asking for it to be vested in the township's names because it does butt up against the Moose Creek property. Also, it's landlocked. No one wants it. It's just going to accumulate taxes, which it has been, and we're, we can't ever collect them because the person who owns it has is deceased now. So and there's been no contact from the estate, so it's just sitting there gaining arrears. Nothing's come of it. When it goes into the township's name, it becomes exempt from taxation, so we don't have that accumulating for no particular reason. So.
Looking at the picture, it just looks like somebody is mowing hogs on it or something, potentially. Maybe this can be fenced and made part of the park.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, there is some, I'll call it debris on there right now, that once it's vested in the township's name, there'll be steps taken to clean it up.
To make a comment, I don't know the value of the rec to attain that or to to occupy it and clean it up if that would be serving. Let me see where the parking lot is. But was there not, I guess, interest? Because there it looks like it's part of the backyard of a property that they've been maintaining. But Mr. Tebow, can you maybe?
Yeah, through the chair, it's it's right on the south, sorry, northern of the the, it could be said in Moose Creek, where the propane tanks are. I don't know if you're familiar with at the back. It's it's right on the edge of this. I know there's a lot of mature trees on that property. There'll be some work and have to be fenced off if you ever want to use this as additional parking space or something. Just because the neighborhood, we're in the backyard, so obviously this would have to be fenced in. So yeah, even if we are acquiring it to turn this into a parking lot, there's quite a cost to it. So but that could be done in the future, right? At least we acquired it and be something for a future plan.
And Kim, is there anything for you to add as far as the treasure, like your opinion on on this when you get to dealt with this kind of property?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, it takes for for us to vest it in our name, we have to go through the tax sale pro process, which adds about $4,000 to that tax roll for just the process for the year to get it to this state. I think it's in our best interest to put it in our name, have it part of the Moose Creek facility, because it's it's just going to sit there. It's like I said, it's landlocked. The total taxes on that property are like $48 a year. So you can imagine the size of it. So.
Okay, seeing no further questions, all in favor. Motion is carried. Moving on to our bylaws, bylaw 10.1, number 40-2025, in regards to the removal of our holding zone.
Be it resolved that bylaw 40-2025 being a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw 08-2014 to remove a holding zone, East Ontario Land Improvement Limited. Be read a first, second and third time, pass, sign and seal and open council this 10th day of June 2025. Moved by Counselor Bagelley, second by Counselor McDonald.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion is carried. Moving on to item 11, correspondence, 11.1 to 11.3.
Be it resolved that the correspondence as listed as items 11.1 to 11.3 on the agenda be received. Moved by Counselor Bagelley, second by Deputy Mayor Denton.
Any questions on correspondence? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion is carried. So in regards to new business, 15.1, 2024 financial statement.
Be it resolved that the Council of the Township of North Stormont approves the 2024 draft financial statements as presented from external auditors Welch LLP? And further be it resolved that council authorizes staff to sign and execute all necessary documents to finalize the 2024 financial statements for the Township of North Stormont. Moved by Counselor Shane, second by Counselor Bagelley.
Thank you. Any question? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Denton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's more a procedural question. I know that part of the practice of our of our process is to review a letter associated with the audit enclosed afterwards. Is there any reason that we should hold back on approving this? Should we wait for wait for that or not?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That letter will be discussed in a closed session, and actually, it doesn't. It doesn't change these numbers whatsoever.
Thank you.
Clear? Good. Perfect. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion is carried. So scheduling of meetings, coming events, again, they are on the website for all our rec committee events coming up in the in the month. We are going to be moving into a closed meeting. So Madam Clerk. So Madam Clerk.
Be it resolved that this meeting adjourned to a closed session for the following reasons. As per section 239, a meeting or part of a meeting may be closed for the public if the subject matter being considered is B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, and J, a trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial or financial information that belongs to the municipality or local board and has monetary value or potential monetary value. Moved by deputy mayor Denton, second by councillor McDonald.